Good evening. Thank you all for joining. Before we begin, we want to let you know that we are offering American Sign Language Interpreting in Closed Captioning for today's forum. To access the American Sign Language Interpreting, please find the videos for the ASL interpreters, which are listed as ASL interpreters followed by their name. Once you find them, you can lock or pin their video to your screen so that you can see them throughout the presentation. To access Closed Captioning, on the bottom right corner of the screen, there is a multimedia box. Click on that box, you will then see the CC Start option. You can select the language, font, and color that best suits your needs. At this time, all members joining the conversation are muted and will remain muted until the comment period at the end of the formal presentation. This hearing is being recorded and will be posted on the OPWDD website on the Strategic Planning page. Please see the chat box for the link to the planning page. I will now turn it over to Jessica Pidgen, who will go over the agenda for tonight's session. Jessica?
Good evening, everyone. Today's hearing will include a welcome from the Commissioner and a brief overview of the contents of OPWDD's draft 507 Strategic Plan for 2023 to 2027. Following the formal presentation, time will be left for participants to provide comments for up to three minutes. We will first turn to those who have formally registered to speak at today's hearing. If time allows, we will then open it up to others who wish to provide comments. Commissioner?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome to OPWDD's virtual public hearing on the newly released draft 2023 to 2027 Strategic Plan. For those of you who don't know, I'm Carrie Neifeld, and I'm the Commissioner of OPWDD. After months of meeting with stakeholders, the people we support, their family members, provider agencies, and advocates, and with some delays as we have transitioned to a new administration and I recently joined the OPWDD team as Commissioner, we are excited to have released the draft plan for your review. I know there has been much anticipation, and I am eager to hear from all of you about your thoughts on the draft plan and the direction that we'll take as we move forward together to continue to build our service system into all we need and want it to be. As you know, the Strategic Plan, or the 507 Plan, as it is sometimes called, is a comprehensive plan for OPWDD setting the direction for the agency for the next five years. State mental hygiene law requires that OPWDD create this five-year comprehensive plan and update it each year. In 2021, to prepare for drafting a new 507 Plan, OPWDD gathered extensive input from a wide range of stakeholders through testimony at regional forums, meeting with stakeholder groups, and by email. We invited comments on key areas within the service system. The draft plan is now on our website, along with a summary presented in plain language. To be sure we've included everyone's voice in this planning process, these documents are available on our website in English and nine other languages. At this point in establishing the final strategic plan, it is important that we hear from you again. The strategic plan will represent our agreed-upon course of action for the next few years. Our staff worked to capture within its goals and objectives all the priority improvements, changes, and developments that our stakeholders told us were most needed in OPWDD's policy, programs, and operations. And as we put together the draft plan that you are commenting on today, we kept foremost in our mind the desire to improve our service system, the operations, the policy, and the programs, and our ability to monitor and report on how people are experiencing our services. Each of those things is a part of how well we actually help people live the lives that they want to. So the draft plan and the many activities and initiatives it describes, when taken on their own and together, should lead to a more consistently positive experience with our OPWDD supports and services for people with developmental disabilities and their families. That is our desire for the plan itself, that it will guide us in this very important direction. Once it is finalized, we can use the strategic plan to ensure we stay on course as we work together on making things happen that we all agree that we should. We'll take stock each year, examining our progress toward each goal and objective, and provide an update. And if needed, we'll bring forward ideas for new things that were not included but which have become important and necessary to the goal of improving our ability to support people with developmental disabilities in positive and effective ways. And in this way, together, we will continue to mobilize the strategic plan in the months and years ahead in partnership with you. So to get us started on this process, we have set up several ways for people to let us know what they think about the goals and objectives outlined in the draft plan. In addition to the two virtual public hearings yesterday and today, in the coming days, we will announce a series of in-person forums that will take place across the state throughout the summer. I look forward to meeting with you at these meetings and hearing your thoughts and ideas about the draft plan. I know we will have good discussions. Throughout the summer, we will also receive feedback in written form through an online form, also available in ten languages. People can seek assistance with filling out the form, and they can also email comments to us on the draft plan. I encourage everyone to participate. You are our partners in building and sustaining the service system that we want for ourselves, our loved ones, our friends, our neighbors, and our colleagues with developmental disabilities. We will read and consider all comments we receive as we prepare the final plan, which we will make available and submit to the Governor and the New York State Legislature by November 1. So without further delay, I welcome you again to our public hearing, and will turn the program over to Jessica Pidgen, who will briefly outline the draft plan, after which we will hear your comments. Thank you.
As mentioned, this presentation includes a brief overview of the contents of the 507 document, including the strategic planning input and data, strategic goals and objectives, the evaluation, conclusion, and appendices. It also includes our larger vision for how we plan to use our 507 goals and objectives to inform long-term planning and some immediate next steps. In addition to what we will share in this presentation, the full draft document includes specific activities and projects to help us meet our identified goals and objectives. As a reminder, the full draft strategic plan can be found on the strategic planning page of our website. Through all of the stakeholder engagement that we did from 2023 to 2027, OPWDD invited input from its many stakeholders: self-advocates, family members, organizations, providers, and others, in the spring and summer of 2021. Input was provided through five regional public hearings, meetings and targeted input from 33 stakeholder groups, including self-advocacy groups, family organizations, provider organizations, disability councils, and underrepresented groups. Additionally, we collected comments via email and through our existing stakeholder committees and meetings, for example, the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council. We also analyzed Medicaid data, which is available on our website, staff stability data, and reviewed some national data and trends related to people with developmental Based on that engagement and the data analysis, the following key priorities were repeatedly identified: addressing the DSP workforce crisis, improving self-direction, improving housing supports and services, supporting people with complex needs, improving OPWDD's use of data and its transparency with stakeholders, and supporting research of programs and services. Some additional categories highlighted include employment, children's services, health, and improving access to support for those who are from underserved communities. Based on stakeholder input and data, we drafted the following three goals for our 2023 to 2027 507 Plan. The first is supporting people in the most person-centered ways; the second is promoting practices that strengthen the workforce and infrastructure; and the third is advancing systems change and innovation across the state. As noted, Goal One will focus on supporting people in the most person-centered and holistic ways possible. To do this, OPWDD will improve supports and services for people with developmental disabilities throughout their lifespan by addressing gaps in services and ensuring supports are focused on individual need, offered choice, maximize independence, and increase community integration and participation. To help meet this goal, OPWDD will focus primarily on the following objectives. The first is increasing opportunities for community integration and participation in supports that facilitate self-determination and activities that improve social determinance of health. The second seeks to ensure children, youth, and young adults receive appropriate and coordinated services within the context of schools, family, and community. The third looks to expand and improve services targeted for people with complex support needs, including residential and crisis services and behavioral support. And the fourth looks to identify and address gaps in services and support that meet the needs of underserved, culturally diverse, and ethnically diverse communities. Goal Two focuses on advancing the OPWDD system by investing in the workforce, updating the system to better support service delivery, and increasing access to information. The first objective under Goal Two seeks to improve recruitment, retention, and the quality of the direct support and disability workforce. The second looks to advance technology and our information infrastructure, and explore approaches to increase the availability and timeliness of data to support decision-making, monitor performance, and assess the quality of services. And the last seeks to promote opportunities for stakeholders to inform decision-making. Lastly, OPWDD is interested in exploring new approaches and opportunities that advance the system, reduce complexity, and improve responsiveness. To meet this goal, OPWDD plans to strengthen the quality, equity, and effectiveness of support, including the self-direction model, competitive integrated employment services, the continuum of housing and residential options, and care management services. The second is to increase opportunities to explore and implement regulatory and policy changes that support greater flexibility and incentivize improved personal outcomes. And the third seeks to prioritize innovation by evaluating programs, conducting research, and developing opportunities to test new approaches to service delivery. The draft document also includes a brief evaluation section, a conclusion which speaks to our plan to share continuous updates on the status of implementation of our 507 Strategic Plan and the agency's overall progress on meeting our goals. Additionally, we have included various appendices, which share additional information on OPWDD services and more detailed overviews of the input shared by all of the stakeholders in The goals and objectives within the 2023 to 2027 Strategic Plan provide a roadmap for stabilizing the service system in the short term and lay out important research, evaluation, and innovation activities that will inform ongoing system improvement in the long term. We believe the 507 Plan will assist OPWDD and stakeholders to work together to achieve clear and planned progress in waiver and systems reform that move us toward a more person-centered, sustainable, equitable, and coordinated system of supports and services for New Yorkers with developmental disabilities. The immediate next steps of the process include collecting additional stakeholder feedback on the proposed goals and objectives in June, July, and early August, including holding the regional forums throughout the state and collection written stakeholder feedback, as the Commissioner noted. Based on the feedback that we receive, OPWDD will make updates and needed revisions to the document. We will then present the new revisions and information to the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council in August and September per our 507 language and their advisory role. Then we will submit the final document to the legislature and release it publicly in That concludes the presentation part of this hearing. At this point, we will share information about how you can submit any comments you have in writing, and will then open the meeting for oral comments. We welcome your written feedback through July 29, 2022. Please submit written feedback using our written feedback form or via email. The written feedback form link will be included in the chat. If you choose to submit via email, please include in your subject line the 507 Draft We will now open the meeting for comments. As a reminder, those interested in speaking were asked to register to speak in advance of today's hearing. Therefore, we will be calling on registered speakers first. If time permits, we will then open comments to others who did not have a chance to preregister. At that point, I will announce that we now have time for additional participants to provide comments, and ask you to raise your virtual WebEx hand if you would like to speak. We will then call on people to share. To hear from as many people as possible, we ask those of you that we get a chance to call on to please keep your comments to three minutes or less. We will share a timer on screen for speakers to help assist with a three-minute guidance. Please keep in mind that we do have a lot of people on the call, so while we will try to get to everyone who wishes to share comments, we may not be able to do so. And to allow as many people as possible to provide comments, we will not be answering any questions at this time. We will now begin our public comment period. We will call on speakers one by one, at which point Josie will unmute you. At the end of the three-minute period, you will be muted, and Josie will call on the next speaker and unmute them. Josie, first speaker, please.
Allison Dion Gregorio, you're now unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. In prior opportunities to speak about OPWDD and services, my son's age progresses from 13, 14, 16. He is now 21, and the song remains the same. New York State was once described as the model for the rest of the country. Today, I describe it as a system that is an illusion of services. When you search OPWDD's website, you will find many promising services. However, if your adult child is in crisis, there are limited supports and limited psychiatric ERs to assist. The only way to bust through the crisis door is by abandoning your adult child, since they will eventually become a danger to themselves and others. Goal One is basically, how do we support people in the most person-centered way? You know, the life plan is supposed to be that document that is crucial to our loved ones, except when you read this document, it is filled with other information that does not describe the individual. For example, my son is 21 years old. He does not speak. However, if you were to read his life plan, at times, before I did it myself, you would think a person had an entire conversation with the care manager. I'm sorry. From the beginning of the transformation to the CCO, stakeholders were promised, and we are still waiting for that robust service delivery. We were told it would happen, however, it has not arrived. Care managers often have to chat Google Groups to search for services that are requested. I often wonder why OPWDD's website does not have a better description of what is available so that care managers do not eventually get frustrated and leave their jobs, which then causes more instability to that individual and that family. If someone is lucky enough to find a program to support them. There are services that are funded at a one-to-one rate, but when you look at the three-plus rate, will always exceed the one-to-one rate, making those with the highest needs financially unfavorable to serve. When you look at the day hab and the units, the max units are 215 days a year. With 365 and 104 Saturdays and Sundays and 11 holidays, you're left with 250 days to serve an individual. What happens to the other 35 days? I call this OPWDD math because it's impossible to figure out the rationale. And then there are those site-based and PWW programs at the same rate. How are agencies supposed to support those with the highest needs when they're not receiving the funding necessary to staff these programs and to put supports in place to help support their staff to support our loved ones? In terms of self-direction, a person is given a budget. I'll give you an example, but they cannot use it in the way that they need. So in terms of behavioral support, if a family is lucky enough to find a person to support them, this is a non-direct support. The guidance is vague, and when an FI is trying to get clarification from OPWDD, they do not get clear responses, which leads them to not support the request from the family. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Josie, next speaker, please.
Next, we have Carla Benfeld.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Carla Benfeld. I am the sister of a 64-year-old man with intellectual disabilities, and I have two comments. First, I propose adding a new objective 1.5 titled "Developing Strategies to Support the Aging." So often, the most forceful advocates for individuals with ADD are parents, which explains why we so often see calls for improvements to education, supported employment, and day hab programs. But we cannot ignore the fact that the ADD population is aging, as all of us do, and OPWDD must not be caught flat-footed when these individuals can no longer climb stairs or when their health status changes. It should start strategizing now to support them. Issues arising from aging were also identified by commenters during last evening's forum and by stakeholders and provider groups, as noted in Appendix C. I would also like to say to any parents listening this evening who plan to submit their own comments, please do not forget that your loved ones will age, they will become trailer, and they will experience the most vulnerable stage of their lives as elderly people when you may no longer be here. So the time for strategic planning is now. Take the long view in your comments, advocate now while you still can for programs and supports your loved one will need to be able to age in place with dignity. My second comment concerns workforce pay. I propose that every reference in the draft to the term "workforce crisis" be replaced with a more accurate term "workforce funding crisis" in order to specifically identify the problem for our legislators. I do not believe that we have a shortage of workers. What we have is a shortage of dollars to hire them with. The labor market has told us so. It is simply impossible to hire and retain staff for less than what the labor market demands. Every employer knows this. The supply and demand of the labor market determines compensation levels that work. There is no other reality for hiring anyone for anything. Thank you, and this concludes my comments.
Thank you, Carla. Josie, next speaker, please.
Chris Pulega, you're now unmuted.
Good evening. My name is Chris Pulega. I'm the chairperson of the Statewide Family Support Services Committee. I'm also a parent and family caregiver who often struggles with keeping my daughter Catherine safe and living at home. I know firsthand that being a family caregiver comes with ongoing physical, psychological, and financial stressors that are profound and at times overwhelming. Just like family caregivers across New York State, I deal with these harsh realities every day. While the data remains elusive, I believe it's safe to say that family caregivers are the largest group of the direct care workforce, numbering in the hundreds of thousands and providing billions of dollars of services without compensation. I believe we are supporting the most utilized housing option for New York State's developmentally disabled, living at home with family. There's an intimate relationship between families' ongoing ability to support this housing option and the demand for much higher-cost residential placements that OPWDD is currently unable to meet. Given this, it is clear to me that keeping these families intact and functional is foundational to the success of OPWDD. And because of this, it's clear to me that any strategic plan aimed at resolving the unprecedented DSP workforce crisis is incomplete and rendered much less effective without including the discussion of the role family caregivers play in supporting the system and the value we return on investment. It's clear to me that any strategic plan aimed at resolving our current housing crisis is incomplete and rendered much less effective without including the discussion of the role family caregivers play in supporting the system and the value we return on investment. Supporting us is not only the right thing to do, but also, I believe, one of the best ways to improve the long-term outlook for the systems of care that support some of our most challenged New Yorkers, because I know that making families stronger will make the system much stronger. I've been promoting the position that supporting families through family support services, a program that accounts for just a tiny fraction of funding under OPWDD's control, is one of the most powerful tools we have available to meet some of our greatest challenges. Unfortunately, the draft 507 Plan does not adequately address the needs of families caring for loved ones at home. It does not reveal any curiosity to understand family support services as a strategic tool or any intention to explore what is so obvious to so many of us who live and work in this realm on a daily basis. Commissioner, with that said, I remain hopeful that we are not as far apart on this issue as it might otherwise seem, and I reiterate my recommendation that we engage in a comprehensive effort to understand and appreciate the true value of what supporting families through FSS can bring to the table as we work together to achieve each of your current strategic goals. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Josie, next speaker, please.
Ellie Ruffer, you're now unmuted.
I just want to comment on what we've heard so far, and I have to say that after listening, I know I'm going to write a formal written statement, but for now, this is what I have. Thank you, OPW, for this opportunity to speak. I'm Ellie Ruffer. I'm a parent and advocate for all people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. It is heartening to see that OPWDD has resumed creating a 501 Plan as required under statute. This, along with the tone and demeanor of the current administration, is a welcome change, but our problems will remain the same and will remain after the ARPA money runs out. I had hoped that this draft plan would provide actual solutions to the large problems that block the path forward. I was naive. The 507 Plan lays out a process as stated repeatedly. Here's a reality check. We cannot wait. Staffing shortages, housing options, day and employment opportunities are recognized, but instead of concrete plans, OPWDD will begin work groups to study the problems and perhaps come up with the solutions. Where have we heard this before? I noticed certain words mentioned numerous times in the text. Work group is mentioned eight times, initiative 16, project 16, evaluations 14, and 22 mentions of ARPA. Are these words the path forward? Are the specific goals these work groups, initiatives, evaluation, and projects are aiming for, and will there be any way to measure their success? When the money to fund all the research runs out, will our workforce be left with only a memory of the extra cash from the federal government? If we don't have a workforce, there's no point in dreaming of new initiatives, innovative ways of serving an incredibly diverse population. No work group will solve that problem. Ask us for the solutions. We, self-advocates, family members, providers, are all immersed in the issues of every single day. We understand precisely what policies thought of in offices translate in the day-to-day life for people with ADD more than any outside consultants, and our services are free. Please do examine what we say and treat us with the respect and dignity that you have laid out in the opening of your document. Thank you.
Josie, next speaker, please.
Colson Lyon, you're now unmuted.
Yes, thank you. First, I just want to disclose that I am currently employed as a New York State employee at the Institute for Basic Research in Developmental Disabilities, which is known as IVR in Staten Island, New York, and I am speaking today in my role as a private citizen during non-working hours. I'm mostly focusing my comments on Objective 3.3 of the strategic plan pertaining to research. I do fully realize, as a psychiatrist, I see OPWDD clients every day, and I know that there's a huge service crisis, and that is clearly what many, many people are working toward. But I do want to just highlight that IVR has been the research arm of OPWD for the last 60 years, and over the last decade, there's been chronic underfunding of IVR and research. And over the last decade, there's been chronic underfunding of IVR and research. And it's not really clear to me, you know, the fact that there's an appropriation. It's $29 million a year. It's like right there on the Budget Director's website. And despite numerous inquiries, really, nobody seems to know where the entirety of this amount goes. And so every year for the last ten years, there's like $9 million that seems to go, that nobody seems to know where it is being spent. And it certainly is not being spent on research in developmental disabilities. And, you know, as I said, I see families every day that are in crisis, and, you know, I know that there are huge service demands. But I do diagnose families genetically, you know, every week. And sometimes families really do want to know why their loved one has a particular condition. And sometimes, if you diagnose somebody with a genetic condition, it enables better treatment, better patient stratification. And it just seems to me like, you know, IVR would benefit from getting the actual appropriation. So, you know, I'm not asking for New York State to, you know, allocate new money or come up with some brand-new initiatives. I'm just simply asking that the, you know, appropriated amount of money, which is $29 million for research in developmental disabilities, that money actually be used for research as it was appropriated. And literally, over the last two years, despite numerous inquiries, nobody within the OPW system can tell me where this money has been spent for the last decade. And of course, I'm extremely hopeful that with the new administration and with our new commissioner, that perhaps I'll hear from them, or people at IVR will at least hear from them. And we would love to be able to continue serving via research the OPW population. Thank you.
Thank you. Josie, next speaker, please. Jim Karp. You're unmuted.
Thank you. I'm Jim Karp. I'm the father of two young adults with developmental disabilities. And thank you for the opportunity to respond to the draft document. And thank you for producing a draft for us to respond to. It's been a decade since the last one. This current draft is thorough and well-written, and it also has glaring flaws. Happily, it's a draft, and those problems can be corrected. One problem has already been mentioned by several of those who testified yesterday and today, the scarcity of measurable outcomes. The draft document does not present milestones. Without milestone markers, we can't tell whether we're moving forward or backward. This lack of measurable outcomes is the symptom of a deeper issue. Before we can have measurable outcomes, we must first have specific long-term goals. We have to know where we want to go. A third problem with the draft plan is a shortage of action. These three things are all interrelated: goals, measurements, actions. We need long-term goals, key measurements of progress toward those goals. With those two things in place, we can take action and evaluate whether those actions were successful. An example will help clarify: employment. Everyone wants to increase employment. So let's set targets which are both ambitious and achievable. An employment rate among people with developmental disabilities of 60% has been reached in other places. Getting there might take a couple of decades, but we can aim for a 5% increase over the next five years. With that aim, we can then try out several different approaches, test them in limited geographies. We have an objective outcome measure that will be used to judge which programs to expand and which to abandon. Employment is just one example. We need similar ambitious achievable measurable goals in other areas as well. For example, we could set the long-term vision of reducing self-injurious behavior by 80% from the current baseline. Start with the five-year goal of addressing the needs of anyone who's been treated for self-injury two or more times. Try different programs for different groups of people. Use the outcome measure to judge which programs to expand and which to abandon. Things are not going to change unless we make changes, take action, do stuff, measure the impact, make adjustments. Thank you again for the opportunity to contribute to this process. My hope is that OPWDD will find a way to speed up your response to the feedback you've received. And I look forward to seeing updates to this plan whenever those outcomes come. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Josie, next speaker, please. John Muller. John, you're unmuted.
Oh, you can hear me? Sweet, I had trouble with my phone. I wasn't sure if I was in or not.
We can hear you.
I see. Perfect. I gotta say, it's great to be at this meeting. I have, what do you call, a lot of things I've been trying to get, you know, looking for too with the system. I also do, I want to start off with too, what do you call, I've been trying to get in touch with the commissioner for, you know, directly, because I remember at that last meeting, apparently, I remember that the email was given through, what was it, the last year? And I've been trying to reach out, but I haven't been able to with no success. I don't know if my emails are going through, because I gotta say, I'm not good with email. But if someone can get back to me, I mean, to respond to my emails, I've been reaching out. I don't know what that's about. I did call the commissioner's office directly too, and one of them actually hung the phone up on me, so I don't know what that was about. So if someone can get back, because I'm having a lot of problems with things. Also, too, as we're talking, there was a problem I've been having with, you know, what's the best way to explain it? Problems like with HIPAA and stuff. My HIPAA was violated, what was it, back in April? And I feel like, I mean, it was handled, but then it wasn't handled because, you know, I actually, you know, don't have those people working for me anymore. But what's the best way to explain this? You know, it's one thing, apparently, you know, what's the best way to explain? I'm trying to best way to explain this in a split amount of time here. Don't mind me, but this is coming out good. Time limits, I gotta say, very hard to explain things. But I feel like, what do you call, the two people got the slap on the wrist. You know, I feel like there was nothing really handled on these HIPAA violations. I feel like, because they're still working there, they, what do you call? I am actually, you know, trying, as we speak, trying to do something. But it would be nice to have the commissioner's help in this process. I could talk more about it in person with her about this HIPAA violation. There's, what was it? There's proof. I got recordings of him, my people admitting into it. So if the commissioner could reach out to me, that would be great, and this issue and others. And I also, too, I want to, in a split amount of time, I also want to bring up maybe something about transportation, because I've been passing this idea around galore, and I feel like this idea is not going anywhere. I notice we're having a big problem with transportation, and I bring this up constantly. And the idea I have with transportation, which I would like someone to look into this idea, it's an idea that doesn't exist, at least not yet. This is why I'm hoping maybe this idea can be brought to light. And the idea I have is, what's the best way to explain this? You know, I mean, what's the best way to explain? You know, all the agencies, now OPWDD controls a fast collection agency of agencies. And all these agencies have transportation. Well, not all of them. I know Captive Charities has, I don't know what they have, but I know COLOC has transportation and all that. But I'm wondering if there's a way we could, you know, utilize these other transportation. I just brought this up at one of my meetings, and I'm trying to squeeze this in, if I can squeeze this in very quickly about this idea, because it would mean a lot if someone could take this idea and use this. And what's the best way to explain this? What if there was a way, you know, we could, we would probably have to have all the CEOs come together, you know, that would probably be OPWDD and everything to talk about this. But what if there was a way we could, you know, what's, what do you call? You know, what's a good example? Say, you know, I need to go somewhere right now. Pretend if I need, I'm in Columbia County, I need to go to Albany or Columbia County. What if there was a way, you know, like, you know, there was a way to, you know, like a little chain thing or something where if someone like me was, you know, has a problem going transportation, they would call their care manager or something. The care manager puts in a workout. You know, I have a client that needs to go so-and-so. Is anyone in the area? Now, say if someone, like, from COLOC, you know, they are busing.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. I'm sorry, John, your time is up, but thank you. Josie, next speaker, please.
Leo Mel. My name is Leo, and thanks for the opportunity to talk to today. I, my son was getting into program like six, seven years back, and he is now twenty-four. But I don't think that in last seven, eight years, we have seen any program or effectiveness or any value of all these things which we have to go through to get qualified. And it just, and what I hear here also in this forum is that every parent has similar kind of story, is that there's a lot of talks and a lot of words, and there is no outcome. And that's just make a lot of people frustrated and also many times it feels that why we have to go through this, that there's no value for it. What I have seen in last eight years is that people get rotated. Everyone is getting paid from care managers to broker to agencies and OPWDD staff, except that the person for who this program and this whole department has been created is not getting any benefit. When I see that your per capita is increased from $62,000 to $68,000, I wonder where that money is going and also how, what is the administrative cost of it? Because I can see that in my own self-service budget, almost 20% to 25% goes into just providing the facility like FRE and broker and other people. But we don't get service. Coming to this strategic plan, again, as someone has already mentioned, is that there are goals, and that are just words. I am wondering why these goals are, is this goals are interpreted in new goals? Like, you should have supporting people in the goal one in most person-centric way. Is it a goal for next five years, or it was a goal when OPWDD was born? Or whenever these things are gone, promoting the practices, these are our words. I don't understand what is the difference between goal one and goal three. For me, both look same. What is the difference between advancing system changes and supporting people? And unless we have methods, we cannot improve this. We have to have a goal, as someone says that, what percentage of it? And coming to the all ARPA money which we are going to spend here, instead of getting someone from the outside world, you have all the feedback in your strategic plan from the parents that that's what you should do. But I don't see any of those things addressed in your strategic plan. I hope that you will look into that, and instead of spending all this ARPA money on some external content, use those and create some better efficient system to actually give help to the people who need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Josie, next speaker, please. Roy, you're now unmuted. Roy Probie, you're now unmuted.
Thank you, Commissioner, for these forums. My bride of fifty years, Arlene, passed away over ten years ago. We are a Fragile X family. All three sons have autism and intellectual disabilities. Roy Jr.'s 59, Michael 58, and Glenn 54, continue to live with me in our home as they have done from birth. Arlene and I vigorously advocated over the decades for as broad a spectrum of services as possible for our sons and their peers. Many decades ago, the first time I testified in support of services for adults like my son to then-New York Assemblyman Stephen Sanders Select Subcommittee on ADD, the state of services were terribly lacking and inadequate. I closed by saying their mom and I would prefer the pain and agony of laying our sons to rest rather than dying before them to leave them to the tender mercies of that system. It turned out to be prophecy. Roy died from choking over three years ago due to depraved indifference for his life by a burnt-out staff. Nine months ago, Glenn suffered catastrophic injuries from a fall because staff left him alone in the bathroom on a wet floor. That led to a two-year painful struggle as a paraplegic with severe lung disease until he died. I lay this at the feet of the ex-governor who methodically starved services in New York State for our loved ones during his reign, underfunding the provider agencies, overworking the DSPs who needed two jobs, and underpaying them as well. OPWDD in the last decade too has lost its way, its sense of mission. Priority one is to care for our loved ones with the greatest needs, especially those living at home with aging and infirm parents. Yes, as I said, there must be a continuum of first-and-centered planning services, excuse me, and choices for all. IRAs, along with supportive, integrated, or independent residential services, by the way, such as the one we recently built and opened here in Suffolk County. Day service need to be more person-centered, community-based, and integrated as originally implemented when the waiver came to be. Now they have grown under the previous administration to be congregate care settings in large day rooms. Sound familiar? And not least, much-needed improvement for employment opportunities. Self-direction is by no means the be-all and end-all. It was wrong of OPWDD to be marketing this service, as was told to me when it was launched by a senior official in your cabinet. That is the antithesis of first-and-centered planning. After Roy's death, the agency which served them, my sons, for twenty years, pulled out the residential COMHAB services that we had. I was forced to use self-direction to keep my sons as home. I'm eighty-three and never worked harder. Beside the minutia of self-directed bureaucracy, broker, FI, CCO, being the immediate supervisor of six DSPs, oh, my love, but it is most challenging. This is my eighth 507 Plan. It is déjà vu to me. With all due respect to the brainstorming and hard work that went into it, there is no there there. That has been said, there are no measurables, no concrete projects. Lots of research, work group studies, which are nice, well-written, lofty, but which one of our loved ones' lives will improve and in what way on November 1st by virtue of what's in it? Finally, it is simply not accurate, as it says, that managed care has been a benefit to our loved ones for as low a cost for them in states that have that, certainly not OPW's own PHB. Governor Coke, excuse me, is a welcome change, as you are, Commissioner. I am hopeful the progress of this year will be an important first step on a road to recovery of proper care of our loved ones and the strengthening of the not-for-profit provider agencies. In closing, Hubert Humphrey said, "The moral test of government is how it treats those in the dawn of life, the children, those in the twilight of life, the aged, and those in the shadows of life, the sick, the needy, the disabled." Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Josie, next speaker, please. Simona He. You're now unmuted.
Yes, hello. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Yes, I am a certified family care provider. For many years, I've taken care of individuals in my own home while I maintain a professional job. My parents were also family care providers, and I started out as a sitter while I was in college. I'm a family provider now, and there are many, many issues I'd like to talk about, but I'll try to hone in on a few. One is that I am an ardent promoter of aging in place. Over the last fifteen years, twenty years that I've been a provider, I've had individuals who um, I've had individuals who have aged and have been removed from my home, uh, uh, where their rooms were located up a stair, stairway, up and down. I see them a month later and they're in a large room, uh, in a wheelchair, unable to walk. Um, so, um, aging in place is very, very important. Um, these individuals are family to me. They're not just individuals and sometimes I think that relationship is exploited, uh, by OPWDD. But one of the main things is that, um, during COVID, March 2020, um, my individuals are required to be, uh, uh, in my home. They call that day pro, um, resabilitation and in pro, and program, which is, um, community habilitation. Um, the programs closed March 2020. Uh, one of my individuals has been home for, uh, now it's two years, three months. And the other individual has been home for one year, uh, year and a half. Um, despite being on the phone hundreds, hundreds of times with care managers, changes in staff, uh, they remain home. Uh, meanwhile, their programs, uh, that they are now closed. Uh, these individuals are with me for all this time, 365 days a year, 24/7. Um, uh, I have not gotten any compensation while the day programs continue to bill and continue to get compensated for these individuals, although they have no remote, uh, contact with them, no physical contact with them. And I'm not understanding that. Uh, there was a, um, I believe a heroes, uh, um, program, vaccination program in which, uh, direct care support and family care providers were to be compensated. Um, and that went into effect in December. I have not seen that. Uh, there were webinars on it, uh, monies have been released. I have not seen that. Um, uh, one of the other problems is like instead of staff retention, uh, when you have, uh, places like Target, TD Bank and, uh, Home Depot starting at 18, 20, $21 an hour, it's hard, uh, uh, to keep and retain staff. Um, so I just would like to thank you all.
Thank you. Josie, next speaker, please. Suzanne Forgota, you're now unmuted.
Thank you. Um, I have to just say that Roy or Thomas, your story, um, has moved me so much. I'm not sure I can even speak. Thank you for your words. Um, thank you, Commissioner, and the rest of the OPWT team who put this together. Um, I appreciate all that you guys are trying to do as a new group, um, and giving me the opportunity. Thanks, uh, for the plan. You know, writing a five-year plan isn't easy, right? Any entity, whether it's private sector, human services, it's not an easy thing to do. So I applaud you guys. As someone else said, it's been over a decade without a real strategy in place. So fantastic for that. I think maybe I had really high expectations for it after hearing the Commissioner many, many times. Um, I'm thrilled with what you say and how you say it. But my expectations, I think, like many have spoken today, were more around sort of the strategic part. Um, and I would say this document feels more like a start. It feels like a beginning. It's kind of like the plan for the plan, if I may say that. I think the biggest piece of this is really, it's missing deliverables, right? Just what a strategic plan should look like. And people have mentioned it, baseline, targets, deliverable dates, timelines, accountability, transparency. So I think the words that are in there are fantastic and the ideas. Um, but it seems the strategy isn't deliverables. It's words like people have already said, evaluate, examine, explore, plan, collaborate, assess, partner. Those are all good sort of things to do to get to the deliverable, whether it's year one, two, three, four, or five. Um, so I think it falls short that way. And at the end of the day, you can't have deliverables really without data. I think the data is flawed, um, that's even in the opening of it. And I apologize if you guys were trying to pull more together. But at the end of the day, 2019 DSP vacancy rates, 2022 is a very different landscape. I would say that we may be at a 50% uh, vacancy rate. And so the question becomes why? As the first speaker mentioned, I think it was Carla, um, there really is an issue, right? We have an issue. What is the market telling us? Um, the other issue was where is the data about recipients actually receiving their services versus sort of the, the deployment of funds, like in the utilization data? Um, you know, where is that? And how, what is it? And how are we going to change that? What pressure will OPWDD put on itself and the system and agencies to get people back to their programming? How many people are sitting at home or being warehoused at day programs? Because there are just too many. Oh, my gosh, I have a goal for DSPs. Three minutes went by real fast. Here's one, I just thought I would use this. By January 2027, DSPs will receive a full-time salary of $70,000 annually with benefits, full benefits, with a SUNY certification and the respect they deserve. I had probably two more minutes to talk about this, but that's my example of what I think is a deliverable. The governor is listening. She really seems to be listening. She's promised jobs for tech, for women, for small business, for unions. But what about the DSPs? Let's reimagine the DSP workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. At this point, we've heard from all registered speakers and will now open to others who may wish to speak. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your hand now and Josie will call your name and unmute you. We'll give it a moment for people to raise their hands if interested in speaking. Josie, first speaker, please. Lynn Decker, you're now unmuted.
Hi, my, my name is Licker. I, I am like others who have commented, parent, uh, and a parent of two young men who are served by OPWDD in certified residential settings. Want to bring to our attention paragraph in the statute uh, describes what a 507 plan should include. Paragraph E, provide analysis of current anticipated utilization of state and local and public and private facilities, programs, services, and/or supports. Uh, I feel like satisfied that paragraph of the definition of the report is really a place that this report falls down. Many folks make a sense, talk out milestones. We don't even have picture where the system is now. It's been $8 billion annually. Last year in July, your agency released a data book that does have some aspect of expenditures by region, on program categories, by population segments such as sex, race, saying, agnesis, age. Those need another appendix of this report with interpretive charts. Since, um, uh, your reports of COVID resident cases do a good job of showing that there are 4,200 facilities, systems that are served in residential settings. So I presume that you know about their census, their, their occupancy characteristics, their spending. I believe your possession of a lot of data, what is happening today, this year, and probably are to produce a timeline and looking back a five years. Um, and then, uh, finally, I want to boost the stance made yesterday by Mashuda about a C that's written in a way that makes it seem as if all the different stakeholder responses came out of, were generated simply by what different stakeholders. It does not imply that all that input was prompted by, um, a line questions or writing prompts on what you were specifically sitting feedback and specifically feedback you receive along strongly the topics, those writing prompts. So I'd like that really clarified. It's not in a fashion that makes them clear. That's all I have to say. Thank you much.
Thank you. Josie, next speaker, please. Karen DuBois, you're now unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, um, my internet, my wifi here is not very well and I wanted to make sure. You know, I'm listening to people talking and unfortunately I got on here kind of late. Um, you know, I've been involved with OPWDD for over 30 years. And with all the planning and all the strategic, um, plans that we can put in place, one of the things that I have spoken to the director, um, Dave in the Finger Lakes area, because our house did get closed, our, my son's house did get closed because of staffing. I think with all the planning, with all the wonderful programs that OPWDD would like to put forth, our, my, my main concern is that OPWDD needs to do a better, a better job at public relations and especially the rural areas. People don't know what OPWDD does for our individuals. I can talk until I'm blue in the face. The one thing is, is they know who our arcs are because of the public relations they've done and getting out to the community. We are really struggling with hiring staff here. So for us to build new programs, it's wonderful. But until we can staff those programs and get people back to their day programs and reopen houses, it's just not feasible until we do some, some better public relations. People in our area, we're very, very rural out here in Wyoming County. And I think we just need to do a better job getting, getting people to know who you are. And I think once they understand what you do and how you serve our individuals, the staff in my son's house are wonderful staff, but they are still working long hours. And to ask the staff to be recruiting people in some of these tragic episodes of long hours, it's really hard for them. So until they feel they've been appreciated and OPWDD does a job in getting out and, and informing people on what they can do and do a better job recruiting and retaining staff, I think we're really going to struggle with these plans. I would also like to be able to see OPWDD get some of this information in the mail to many of us. The only way I knew about this, this discussion was through the New York Alliance, um, Facebook page that I'm on. That's the only way I knew it. We, we didn't see anything here in our rural area. So there's a lot of families out here in Wyoming County that probably didn't even know you were having this meeting tonight, even just to listen to. So I think we need to get the information to the families besides the wifi, the internet, the Zoom, the web meetings. We need more in-person meetings. Um, we need to probably go back to our stepping stones on how we used to do face-to-face meetings for people. And I guess that's all I have to say, that, that, you know, our plans are going to be great. But until we do a better relationship with the community here in our rural areas, we're going to struggle putting these plans into place for our individuals here in the very rural areas.
Thank you. Josie, next speaker, please. Joe Girardi, you're now unmuted.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Joe Girardi. Uh, hi, Roy. Um, we are a Fragile X family as well. My son is, Joey is now 38 years old, still living at home with us. And he is the mayor of our hometown of Lindenhurst, Long Island. Um, and that is because of one thing pretty much. Uh, the path that we chose to avoid, uh, interactions with the nonprofit agencies and to pursue what used to be referred to as self-determination. Um, I really think that I have testified, uh, at the five-year plans for quite a long time, not quite as long as Roy, but almost. And I'm starting to feel that what we usually wind up hearing from a lot of people, I've heard it on the call, I too wasn't able to get in till about six o'clock, is that the verbiage of the plans is always wonderful. It's aspirational, it's perhaps inspirational, but it doesn't really translate into a mandate for, uh, changing the system. Uh, I, I, I understand, Commissioner, that, you know, the ship of bureaucracy is hard to, uh, change direction. But we really need to, to admit that, uh, there has to be some sort of plan in place that does several things. One of which is given the, give the assumption that people are more capable than they, than they are perceived to be. And I've talked about this for probably the last 20 years or close to it. If we were able to, uh, move everybody over one spot and from an ICF to an IRA, from an IRA to a supported department, uh, people would be happier, they would be more productive. And I assure you, this would work out for everyone until we get all the way up to completely self-directed services with people who are increasingly capable. Um, I, I think, I think if we think about that in those terms, we'll, we'll have the right goals and the right objectives in mind. Um, I also think that there's a couple of, um, uh, if we could put in some sort of way to, uh, install, uh, a, a, a message for families to help to improve and access the most positive natural supports possible. It's hard for families to do that on their own. But I think OPWDD should, uh, bear a little responsibility about destigmatization and helping people to access, uh, as much of a interaction with the typical community as possible. So once again, I thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we'll do one last call to see if anybody else is interested in speaking. If you're interested, please feel free to raise your WebEx hand. All right. At this time, we will conclude the comment period and I'll pass it back to the Commissioner.
Just want to take a minute to thank everyone for your thoughtful comments and feedback today. It's very helpful to hear, um, your reactions and your thoughts on the plan. And I appreciate everybody taking the time to be here with us tonight and also to invest the time in, in reading and digesting the plan, um, over the last several weeks. I'm grateful to each and every one of you for participating. As we continue, um, to speak with folks around the state about the draft strategic plan, we'll be keeping track of everyone's comments that we hear and we will begin discussing and planning how to use them to create a final version of the strategic plan. Your participation is vital in creating the partnership that we hope for. I look forward to continuing these discussions over the course of the summer as we move into in-person, um, virtual, or move into in-person regional forums. And I hope to see some of you there. Thanks again to what, for, to what, thanks again for all you do each and every day to help New Yorkers with developmental disabilities. Look forward to talking soon. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.